Good evening and welcome to the April 13, 2023, meeting of the Municipality of Anchorage Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Savina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Scott Myers.
Here.
Andrew Romerdal is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda are minutes, and we have minutes for Thursday, March 9, 2023. May I have a positive motion for approval, please? Moved by Ms. Savina, seconded by Mr. Quinn. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved, and we'll move on to the special order of business. Are there any disclosures this evening? Seeing none, the item on the agenda is the annual election of officers, and I would entertain a motion to move this item to the end of the agenda.
Move to move item C2, annual election of officers, to the end.
Is there a second? Mr. Quinn seconds. So any objection to reordering the agenda? Seeing none, we'll have election of officers at the end of the agenda. Next item, the consent agenda has no items. I have no appearance request, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, which brings us to the public hearings. We have two variance hearings this evening. So, going to explain the procedure by which the public may speak to the board. After the staff's presentation is complete on the public hearing items, the chair will ask for the applicant to state their case. The applicant, including all of his or her representative, has 10 minutes for the presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests with the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. A concurring vote of a majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. On the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The chair will then open the hearing to public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the rules of procedure. Representative of groups, like community councils or PTAs, have five minutes and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the board. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed and then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. An individual may have appeal rights, any individual may have appeal rights, related to any action that the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals takes. The parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So with that, we'll start with the first case, case 2023-0018. Petitioner is Victor Knott. Thank you. Not yet, almost.
Yes.
Not yet.
Sometimes I really don't need it.
Just wait. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On February 10, 2023, a total of 99 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 2103020H. Notice, as of this writing, one public comment in support was received. The Rabbit Creek Community Council provided comments with no objection to this case.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Victor Knott is requesting a dimensional variance from AMC Table 2106-1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow an existing garage/shop to encroach 20.3 feet into the 50-foot rear setback located on the Westerly boundary. In July of 2002, Fred Willock and Associates created a plot plan for issuance of a building permit for the single-family residence and garage shop. Prior to construction of the garage shop, the surveyor was called out to stake the location to maintain separation from the rear setback. Construction of the garage shop commenced in November of 2004. Prior to the pouring of the foundation after excavation, the surveyor was called out again to verify that the original stakes placed were still accurate. In December of 2022, the property owner realized that the building permit had not been closed when construction was completed in 2005. An as-built survey was performed by Farpoint Land Services to finalize the steps needed to close this permit. The new as-built found the discrepancy from the 2002 plot plan, showing the encroachment of the garage shop into the rear setback, requiring a dimensional variance to close out the building permit. In order for the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals to approve the variance, the application must state with particularity the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A is partially met. There are no physical circumstances, such as streams, wetlands, or slope, that are applicable to this parcel and the surrounding zoning district. However, there is a unique circumstance that should be considered. The garage shop was staked in its current location by a professional licensed surveyor to locate the structure outside of the rear setback. The property owner relied on the surveyor to perform this accurately. Unfortunately, the shop was staked in the wrong location within the rear setback. This garage shop has been in this location for 18 years. Standard B is met. Relocation of this structure outside of the setback would create an exceptional and undue hardship on the property owner. The garage shop was staked in its current location by a surveyor to locate the structure outside the rear setback. The structure has existed in this current location without complaint for the last 18 years. Standard C is met. The property owner did their due diligence when relying on a professional hire to do the work and trusted this work would be done correctly and to code. Standard D is met. This structure has existed in this location for the past 18 years. There have been no known complaints from the adjacent property owners to date. The property owner most affected by this encroachment to the west provided a letter of non-objection, which is page 18 of your packet. Standard E is met. The proposed use does not change the character of the zoning district or the intent of the code. A garage shop is allowed in the R6 zoning district as an accessory use. The garage shop is also smaller in size than what is allowed for this parcel. Standard F is met. The structure has existed in this location for the past 18 years, within the 50-foot rear setback, without any known impacts to the health, safety, or welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard G is met. The standard is not applicable to a single-family residence. Standard H is met. This is the minimum variance to allow the existing structure built in 2004 to remain in this location without having to be removed, relocated, or altered to be located outside of the rear setback. This variance will allow the property owner to finalize the process of closing out this 2002 building permit. There were no objections to this variance from any of the reviewing agencies, starting on page 24 of the staff packet. Therefore, the department finds that Standard A is only partially met, and Standards B, C, D, E, F, G, and H are met. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1 and 2, found on page 5 of your staff packet. Just for a knowledge-based thing, R6 zoning is the only residential district with this large of setbacks in the whole municipality. So no other zoning district has 50-foot rear setbacks. Not that that should sway you in any way, but just thought you might want to know that. I can answer any other questions, and the petitioner is here to present.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Okay. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? He indicates not. Then will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward, state, and spell your name for the record?
Yes. My name is Victor Knott. Last name is K-N-O-T-T. I live at 14114 Rocky Road. I am the property owner of the note here that we're requesting a dimensional variance on my garage that I built 18 years ago. At this time, I have been in Anchorage for 59 years, owned property and paid my taxes for over 42 years in the Municipality of Anchorage. I successfully made it to where I could retire, and this garage that we're discussing was part of my retirement plan so that I could enjoy my hobbies, which are restoring old vintage automobiles and vintage snowmobiles. I have worked my entire life at two different jobs, saved my money, managed my financial affairs wisely. Upon building my garage, my dream garage, I had hired an engineer to come out and survey the lot, pin the locations for my building, and with knowing that, after the second visit from the engineers, I was then started to build my garage. Since then, I have completed my building, and now I find out that I am encroaching in the setback. With being on a retirement pension, I spent all my money building my dream garage so I could enjoy my hobbies. Other than that, that's all I have to say. My available time that I still have left, if I could, I could pass it on to my, one of my neighbors, who is also the surveyor on this job.
You have about eight minutes left, but he can...
I don't really have anything else to add to this. I'm new at this. I'm just trying to clarify and resolve this issue, apparently that I have encroached on the setback on my property, and that's on the rear of my property. I'm on 2.5 acres, so I have a large lot.
He can be part of your testimony, or he can testify as an individual?
Well, he could be part of my testimony.
Come forward and state and spell your name, please.
My name is Mark Eid, E-I-D. I'm here as not only a neighbor of Vic's, but also as a professional surveyor. Vic, I've visited Vic's place for many years and never noticed that he was, that his garage was encroaching until he had asked me to do the survey. I offered to do the survey for him because he found out that he needed to close out his building permit. In doing so, Vic shared with me the notes from a previous surveyor, which we then recomputed to see what the notes provided, and the notes provided the building and the location that we show in our as-built, which is encroaching into the setback. And it happened again the second time before or right after the foundation was poured. They came out to stake because Vic, doing his due diligence, was trying to make sure that he was doing everything right. So he built the garage, and now 20 years later, he's finding out that it's not where it was meant to have been according to the plot plan that was submitted. I guess the, which, so none of this is any fault of Vic's. He tried to do his best to make it right, and unfortunately, for whatever reason, the people he hired weren't able to do that. So that's, really, the crux of the matter is that it's in the wrong place because of somebody else, and it's not Vic's fault 20 years later. The one savings grace that I can see, well, there's many, but one additional item to letter A of the, whatever they're called.
Standards?
Standards, is that Vic actually owns a corner lot, which would change the zoning setbacks as well. The lot line to the south of his property is a patented road easement. It's not a developed road easement, but it's patented, which would make him a corner lot, which would change the side yards or all the setbacks, especially the front, and then the opposing front setback gets half of that. So in lieu of the rest of the reasons why he should be granted this variance, that would be one consideration to look at, is the fact that the setbacks would be different if you considered him having a corner lot. Anyhow, that would be my contribution to helping Vic with his variance.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And you still have about five minutes left for rebuttal, should you need it?
I just have some neighbors that I guess would like to come by and testify when that's permitted.
Yeah, okay. We'll get to that. And you didn't have any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. So now we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? You have to come forward and state your name and...
My name's Richard Esler. I live at 3280 Dearman, which is the side corner of Vic's lot.
So could you spell your last name, please?
E-A-S-L-E-R.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, it's not bothering me whatsoever, being that it's so far from my garage, and there's, just wanted to say, there's no problems on my part.
Okay.
And that's it.
Are there any questions of Mr. Esler by the board? Did I miss you? Did you handle it? Thank you.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Then we have one phone testimony, and Mr. Hatcher will help us with that.
Your call cannot be completed as dialed. Please consult your directory and call again.
Is this Chuck?
This is Chuck.
Chuck, this is the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals, calling for public testimony on case 2023-0018. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
Individual.
All righty, you have three minutes to testify. Please state your full name for the record, and you can begin.
Chuck Kosick. Good evening, members of the board. First off, thank you for serving the community. I'm Mr. Knott's neighbor directly across the road, and this matter has no adverse effect on our neighborhood and definitely no impact on us. Therefore, after reviewing the case history, I see no reason to deny this request and respectfully request that the board unanimously approve this case, 2023-0018. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Chuck by the board members? Seeing none, any questions by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Any questions by the applicant? Okay. Anyone else wishing to testify in case, in this case? Okay, so evidently I missed something, and we have a question of your surveyor. So if you could come forward, please.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Eid.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm just curious, did you go through this field book of the original survey?
Yes.
Were you able to decipher how a survey could be off by 24 feet? Just out of curiosity.
By how far?
24. It's designed it being 54 feet off the property, but then now it's encroaching 20, so it's roughly 24 feet off the design. I'm just honestly curious.
Right, and so we replicated the field notes in our software and came up with the location of the building where it is now. So I'm not sure why they were off by that far. I'm not sure what caused them to stake the building where they staked the building.
Like, it wasn't a monument or something that was in the wrong loca...
No, in fact, we located the same monuments that were used in their survey and found everything to be within reasonable tolerances 20 years later for the monumentation, and were able to turn the angles in our software and come up with the locations that they had provided in the notes, and it turns out that that's where the building is located now. So I don't have an answer for why it's 24 feet off, but I have, I have proof that the notes create the building where it is now.
Very odd. That's all I have.
I agree. Anything else?
One more.
Is that a quick question? Are you a licensed land surveyor in Alaska?
I am not, but my firm has two licensed surveyors, and I am one of the owners of the company.
Okay, you're just representing yourself as a professional land surveyor is why I asked. Who's responsible for the survey? It's not stamped.
That was because it's just showing, for Vic's purposes, it showed where the points of the other surveyors...
Did you guys do it?
From the notes, where those points ended up being.
Did you submit an as-built surveyor to the municipality to clear the permit?
I don't know if...
Yeah, we submitted one. Is this it?
If it's not stamped, no.
It's not stamped. Do you guys get a stamped one, Paul?
Through the chair, I have, no, I did not get one in the application.
So how do we know where this thing actually is? We have an unstamped, as-built survey that doesn't really mean anything legally.
That's true, it doesn't, and that's not what the purpose of that was for. The purpose of that particular drawing was to show where the other surveyor's points ended up. I can show, I have a stamped drawing here if you'd like one.
Through the chair. Do you guys require stamped drawings, Paul, for these?
Yes, we do, that's my bad. I didn't realize it wasn't stamped.
We got stamps. What do we do?
Sounds like you gotta go through the process again.
No, through the chair, through the chair. I have a stamped drawing, same drawing as you have, except without the points shown on it, and I would be happy to submit it.
Yeah, we don't clear permits at this board. The Paul's group does.
You're fine.
Point of clarification through the chair. We don't actually do permits, we do variances.
I'm sorry.
So, yes, stamped, surveyed, stamped, as-built, showing the exact location when it was taken in his application. That's not necessary, that's necessary for the building permit, which he'll have to submit also. So if he has one, do you have enough for the whole board, or do you just have one?
I have a couple copies.
Just kind of have to sneak around the barrier.
Three copies of a stamped as-built, which are identical to the one we have, it's stamped, and they don't have a few points on it.
Your side, then. Send that one to that side. Any other questions for Mr. Eid? David still have, they still have to, I mean, he still has to get his, send it to them. Does it mean, does it show where it is?
It does, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think we're fine, huh? We're okay? Yeah? Okay, just make sure that there's no one else to testify. Anyone else wants to testify in case 2023-0018? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony. And does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair, and I'm sorry about the packet not having the stamped as-built.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Then the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please?
I move in case 2023-0018 to approve a variance from AMC Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards Residential Districts, to allow an existing garage shop to encroach 20.3 feet into the 50-foot rear setback, subject to the conditions shown on page 5 of the staff report.
Thank you, and seconded by Ms. Savina. It has been moved and seconded that a variance be granted to allow the existing garage shop to encroach 23.3 feet into the 50-foot rear yard setback, subject to the conditions shown on page 5 of the staff report. Will Mr. Quinn, will you please speak to your motion?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be supporting my motion. I think the applicant did everything they were supposed to do. If you're building something, you have it designed by a surveyor. After it's on paper, you have the surveyor go out and they stake it, construction staking, and that dictates where the construction starts, and they typically do offsets and those kinds of things. And it sounds like, it sounds like they came out a second time, even after they originally staked the building, just to confirm. And based off what your surveyor is saying, everything should have checked out, it just wasn't designed correctly from the get-go. So none of this is any fault of the applicant, and it seems like they went through all the correct steps and their due diligence and designed and constructed it according to, you know, the way that they were supposed to do it, and at some point, you just have to rely on the per... And at some point, you just have to rely on the professionals that you hire to design things correctly. And in this case, that's not what happened. So, uh, in, on, uh, finding A, I would, there's not a stream wetland or slope, but I do think that there is just such an error and a flaw here that I, I think that item A has been met, and I agree with staff's findings on B through H, so I'll be supporting my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Savina, will you speak to the motion, please?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Quinn. And as far as, um, A, you know, it's a unique circumstance. The applicant did his due diligence when he was designing, well, maybe not him designing, when he did submit for the permit. So I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? Seeing none? I'm gonna say something. I find these types of cases particularly difficult case. Cases where the property owner did everything correctly. Cases where the property owner relied on professionals and/or the municipality or both for information, and that information was later found to be incorrect. I've served on this board on and off for over twenty-five years and have quite a bit of institutional memnary. In the past, where a professional made a mistake, accepted responsibility and if the, and accepted the responsibility, if the variance was denied, it was up to the professional to make the correction. In this case, the professional is no longer living. The property owner has no recourse, and I find this to be a mitigating circumstance and will therefore be supporting the motion. So with that, we'll vote. Okay, there are seven votes in the affirmative, no votes in the negative, and the variance is granted.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Next case. Case twenty-two-three-zero-zero-three-two. Ryan Erwin. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On March twentieth, twenty-two, a total of one hundred and eighty-one public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC twenty-one zero-three-zero-two-zero-H notice. As of today, no public comments have been received, other than the signed petition found on page seventeen of the staff packet from the neighbors, which was included in the application. The Sand Lake Community Council did not provide comments regarding this case.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff present the case, please?
Ryan Erwin is requesting a dimensional variance from AMC table twenty-one zero-six dash one, table of dimensional standards residential districts to allow an existing arctic entry and elevated deck to encroach three-point-five feet and nine-point-five feet into the twenty-foot front setback. In June of twenty-twenty-two, the homeowner signed a contract with Treeline Construction to rebuild the existing rear deck. Their building permit was denied due to the existing encroachment of the arctic entry and elevated deck into the front setback. The arctic entry and elevated deck that encroached into the front setback were built at least twenty-six years ago, according to nineteen-ninety-seven aerial imagery. This home was purchased as-is by the current homeowner in January of twenty-twenty-one, with no mention of encroachments or issues with the existing structure. Issuance of this variance will allow the homeowners to acquire the building permit to rebuild the rear deck. In order for the zoning board of examiners and appeals to approve the variance, the application must state with particularity the relief sought, and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application, that substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A is not met. There are no extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. There are no streams, wetlands, or slopes that are applicable to this property and the surrounding land in the same zoning district. Standard B is partially met. The physical circumstances defined in the standard A above do not apply to this property. However, the removal of the arctic entry and elevated deck would create an exceptional or undue hardship for the property owner. Arctic entries and elevated decks are a right commonly enjoyed by other properties in the R-two-A district, but are to remain outside of the setbacks. Also, this right is enjoyed by the neighboring property to the west, Windsor Village subdivision number one, block two, lot three, in the same district. This property owner applied for and received a dimensional variance in nineteen-ninety-three for an, for an attached two-car garage with a rooftop deck that encroached seventeen-point-nine feet into the twenty-foot front setback. Standard C is met. This hardship is not self-imposed. These encroachments were constructed by a previous owner of the property. Again, according to aerial imagery, these structures were constructed sometime prior to nineteen-ninety-seven, and the current property owner purchased this home in twenty-twenty-one, unaware of the existing structures, being out of compliance with current code, only learning of this encroachment when their contractor applied for a building permit to reconstruct the rear deck. Standard D is met. These structures have existed in this location for twenty-six years. There have been no complaints from the adjacent property owners to date. The neighboring property owners within Linden Court and the two adjacent property owners on Linden Drive provided written support for this variance and do not object to this encroachment. Again, this is found on page seventeen of the staff packet. Standard E is met. The variance does not change the character of the zoning district or the intent of the code. An arctic entry and elevated deck are features commonly enjoyed in this neighborhood. Standard F is met. These structures have existed for twenty-six years, within the twenty-foot front setback, without any known impacts to the health, safety, or welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard G is met. ADA is not applicable to a single-family residence. Standard H is met. This is the minimum variance to allow the existing structures built prior to nineteen-ninety-seven to remain in this location without having to be completely removed or reduced in size, if possible. There were no objections to this variance from any of the reviewing agencies, starting on page thirty-two of the staff packet. Therefore, the department finds that standard A is not met, standard B is only partially met, and standard C, D, E, F, G, and H are met. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions one and two, found on page five of the staff packet. I can answer any questions the board may have, and the petitioner is in attendance.
Are there any questions of staff by the board?
Through the chair. Paul, I didn't see any reference to recent variance granted for this similar issue in this neighborhood. I did read the part about it being in the, the homeowner founder had heard about some previous issues. Do you have any record of recent variances in this, in the same, same location?
Mr. Smythe, through the chair. If you turn to page forty-five of your staff packet, it's the very end. It is the historical documents. This is the neighbor to the west, their variance in nineteen-ninety-three. That's the latest one.
Thanks, nothing newer than ninety-three?
No, sorry, nothing newer than that.
I thought we may have even heard a case recently, as the chair had said. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none. Any questions of staff by the applicant? He indicates not. Then will the applicant come forward and state and spell your name for the record, please?
Hello, board members and Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Ryan Erwin, E-R-W-I-N. I'm the owner at the property of seven-one-four-four, seven-one-four-zero Linden Court.
Can you lift the mic up just a little bit or get a little closer? It's hard to hear.
So my, my wife and I are hard workers. I'm a registered nurse. My wife teaches at the university here and works at Providence part-time also. We're, we saved up enough money to purchase this property in January of twenty-twenty-one. In last summer, June of twenty-two, we entered into a contract with Treeline Construction to rebuild the existing back deck on the existing footprint. And the permit was denied. This is the first time we had heard about any encroachment of the front deck and arctic entryway, which we're not doing any work on at all. That's what denied this, um, this permit. If we were not, if we're not granted this permit, request that the board understand that this would cause a tremendous financial hardship on my wife and I. And, um, we were not aware of this when we purchased the property. There was no mention of a setback. We learned of this when we entered the contract with Treeline. We simply request to improve upon our property on the existing footprint. And we just request that the board understand that we're simply trying to improve our home. And I respectfully request that the board please understand that our immediate neighbors directly to our west enjoy the amenities of their garage, which substantially encroaches upon this twenty-foot setback. It would respectfully, board, it would, it seemed, it would seem terribly odd and unfair to me that we wouldn't be able to improve upon our house when a neighbor has successfully been approved for such a case that is even at a bigger encroachment. I think everything else has been stated in the, in the application. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I'm not sure what else to pass to the board, so thank you for your time.
Okay, you have about seven minutes left for rebuttal, should you need it. Are there any questions of Mr. Erwin by the board members?
No, thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Erwin by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for, is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Seeing none? Do you have anything else you'd like to say? You have seven minutes.
I'll, I'll just reinforce the, the fact that in our application, we knocked door-to-door to our neighbors, all of our neighbors, and obtained support for this. There's no objection. And I'm not sure how to speak to the standard A. Whether or not it's applicable, we do live on a cul-de-sac with a concave driveway that further limits our distance from the front of the house to this setback. Just respectfully request that that's into consideration, that that further limits us there, whether that's applicable. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Does the staff, did I ask?
You did, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out, this one is stamped for Mr. Hale.
I looked. Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. Can I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Hale?
I move in case two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-three-two to approve a variance from AMC table twenty-one-point-zero-six dash one, table of dimensional standards residential districts to allow an existing arctic entry and elevated deck to encroach three-point-five and nine-point-five feet into the twenty-foot front setback, subject to the conditions shown on page five of the staff report.
And seconded by Mr. Smythe. Mr. Hale, would you please speak to your motion?
Thank you through the chair. I agree with the staff findings in regard to A. I would say that the irregular shape of the lot is a, it defines the physical limits that you're allowed to develop, which is a physical circumstances that we should take into account, and it does affect the, the ability of, of people to construct on that lot. So I think that the standard A is met because of the lot shape. And in regard to B, I believe that the standard is met. It would be an undue hardship. The, the neighbors all, in Alaska, it's pretty common rite of enjoyment to have a arctic entry as well as an entry deck, and to not allow that on this one would be an undue hardship. That's all I have.
Mr. Smythe, would you please speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. I think, again, agree with the staff findings on C through H. A, I think, considering, including but not limited to the hardships listed, or not the hardships, the physical characteristics of the property, I'm again gonna say I think it is the, what's constructed there is a physical circumstance of the property related directly to B, which is undue hardship to, to not only not have the entryway, but the, but even the cost of tearing it down. That's the option that we recognize to meet the strict adherence of the, of the, of the setback requirements. So I do intend to support this motion. No, I have no further comment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question? Didn't ask last time. The question is on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow an existing arctic entry and elevated deck to encroach three-point-five and nine-point-five feet into the twenty-foot front yard setback, subject to the conditions shown on page five of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote. There are seven votes in the affirmative and no votes in the negative, and the variance is granted. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Made my, myself and my wife very happy. It's gonna be a good night. Thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda. I don't have any reports. Any reports from the secretary? No reports? Yeah, but that's to the end. I suppose before adjournment. No committee? Any board member comments?
Madam Chair, I will.
Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Likely be my last meeting with you all once the election is certified, so it was a pleasure getting to know you and serving with you all, so. I'll make it official when I know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have election of officers, and we need to elect a chair, a vice chair, and a parliamentarian. Any discussion? Any motion? Anybody want anything? Mr. Hale?
I nominate Ellen McKay as chair and Skylar Quinn as parliamentarian. Can I nominate myself for vice chair? There we go.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Motion passes. I continue as chair. Mr. Hale continues as vice chair. Mr. Quinn continues as parliamentarian. Now to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Thank you, Mr. Hale. We're adjourned.